Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, appointment, we don't have any alternates, so we don't have to appoint. Roll call member, roll call of members present. Michael Crado, Chair.
Kate Stevens, Vice Chair.
Jared O'Connell, Member.
Sam Terrill, Member.
Billy Queenen, Selectmen's Rep.
Jeremy Robitaille, Member.
Okay, and is it my understanding that Rose Medina was sworn in?
He was sworn in unanimously?
No, 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 he has not been sworn in.
Oh, not sworn in, but he was approved by the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so, but, okay, very good. So, once he's sworn in, then he can become a regular member of the board. But he's not here this evening.
He will not be here this evening.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Before I get into public input on non-agenda items, I think I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stevens. I think she has an announcement to make this evening.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for my positive experience on the Planning Board over the past, I think it's been four or five years. In the fall, I had approached Michael saying that I will have to resign soon because family obligations have grown. So, last month, I sent him the formal resignation notice. And I just wanted to thank you all for your collaboration, your dedication, and I appreciate all the views and discussions that each of you bring to the Board. And tonight will be my last meeting, but it has been a privilege to serve with you. So, thank you.
We certainly were very fortunate to have you on this board, and we will be greatly missed. So, we wish you the best of luck, and we thank you for your service.
Wonderful job. Thanks.
Okay. Public input on non-agenda items, items not on the agenda for this evening. Anybody have any input on non-agenda items this evening? All right, seeing no input on non-agenda items, we'll go to the first item on the agenda this evening, a site plan application for a change of use at two seventy-three Dairy Road, tax map two, lot two. The property owner, John and Ben Workinger, application made by Stephen Marshand, I Roof LLC, former business at the location, was a car repair facility applicant, wishes to have office and storage for a roofing company, is the applicant present this evening. Why don't you come forward, sit and sit at the table, and introduce yourselves to the Board.
Hi, my name is Steve Marshand, I'm the owner of I Roof, and I'm the applicant.
I'm Ben Workinger, I'm the owner of the property.
And, okay, and your address is?
Two seventy-three Dairy Road.
Thank you. Welcome. So, we have a site plan application this evening for the Board. Normally, with site plan applications, the first step in the process is to accept the application for completeness. I know, in reading Jay's staff report, that there is a slight issue regarding the use of the property. Maybe, Jay, you can elaborate on that?
Yeah, and I will say, I think this was definitely my oversight. We chatted with Jeff today, the building inspector, who also, I think, reached the same determination. So, I know he had sent out a notice today, unfortunately, but we realized that a contracting business is not a permitted use in the highway commercial district. It is a permitted use in the northern commercial district, it's permitted use in the southwestern commercial district, but it is not on the list of permitted uses in this district. So, that does mean that they will need to go to the zoning board for this application.
Okay.
So, I think we could certainly hear the application, but we would have to mostly defer it.
So, just so you gentlemen know, okay, normally, we would accept an application, we have a plan, and, you know, the butters have been notified, and fees have been paid. But it seems in this case, because the business is not a permitted use in the zoning district, it has to go before the zoning board of adjustment, in order for you to get what's called a variance. And that would require you to file an application with the zoning board, in order to get that change of use made, or allowed, I should say. They have to grant it, it's a legal process. So, I mean, the application, until we get something from the zoning board saying that, okay, you've met the criteria for zoning, we're going to grant you a variance to allow that on the property, I really can't, we really, as a board, can't accept the application tonight for completeness. So, I think that's the first step, is you need to go before the zoning board, and file that application, and request a hearing with them first.
Okay. So, then, so, my, so, will we have to do the zoning board hearing first, if that gets accepted, come back to get the change of use here?
Correct. Once the zoning board gives you a notice of decision granting the variance, you would come back here, you're going to do exactly what you're doing tonight, and what we would do is, we would do, we would accept the application for completeness, based on the change in use to the zoning, and at that point, then be allowed to present your presentation. I will, because you're here this evening, although we won't accept the application tonight, I'll give you an opportunity to give us a brief overview of what you're planning to do, if you're interested in doing that this evening.
Sure.
So, why don't we allow you the opportunity to present what it is that you're looking to do, and if the Board has any questions, they can ask questions. How's that?
I guess, well, you can see, oop, back out a little bit.
This is touching.
In, highlighted kind of in that red, red area, there's, this is building number two. I'll go up there, so.
Right here.
Yeah, right there, yeah. That had most recently been an auto body and Pro Scapes, a landscape company. They moved out at the end of the year. I Roof has, would like to come in and kind of operate their business out of there. It's a three-bay garage, has a couple offices in there. His business would use it for storage of some material and office space. So, we just have to get it, I guess, converted over and change of use to be allowed to try to use that, as that.
Okay. Does the Board have any, can comments have any questions?
I just have one question. Two seventy-three is, that's the lobster boat address, right?
It is, it is, yeah.
Okay, so, can you point to where that is, and where you want the I Roof building to go?
It's an existing building. So, the lobster boat is here, kind of a covered area, the rest of the plaza is there. So, there's another entrance, comes into Fern Feathers. So, you just drive right past Fern Feathers boarding, there's a building right there. Nothing changes with the building, other than they got it remodeled.
Yeah, the footprint, the footprints stay the same. We did siding, windows, painting. Nothing that needs a permit.
I know where it is.
It would probably require a minor, minor site change. Okay.
What, will it change with the site, the site change?
Well, it would require what's called, what we call term here is a minor site. So, if you got approved by the zoning board to have the zoning changed, and you came before us, and we had a hearing, it would be a minor site plan hearing, because the building already exists, it's already existing. You don't have to build something, it's not going to be like, you know, you have to get construction permits, or anything like that.
Okay.
I know, and it was Jay, in Jay's report, there was an issue regarding an impact on emergency access easement.
Yeah, I could probably speak to that, if I may.
Yeah, please do.
So, the owners actually provided this plan that you see up there now to address that issue. You may recall, they had come in here a while ago with a conceptual for a couple of multifamily buildings. So, this shows how they could lay out those two multifamily buildings, which are these two blocks back here, and this is the proposed access. So, what I have my cursor on now would be the emergency access. Rose Meadows is right down here on the bottom, and this would be the way to get out to one oh-two. So, that was the answer to my question. This area is unaffected by the emergency access to that site. So, we're okay on that point. I wanted to make sure of that, obviously, so.
Okay.
That should be on the next zoning board agenda as well, so.
Yeah, so, that would be, yeah, you're not going to. Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
Is there a kennel back there? Or is that?
That Fern Feathers, that building.
Building three.
Yeah, building three, right there.
Does she board, though?
I think so.
Is it in the same area? I'm sure they're locked up, just not going to be a problem.
No, I actually don't know that she does board.
She does do.
She used to.
She does? Is she used to at least? Okay.
But we'll, we'll ask more questions when they come in, yeah.
The dates, the zoning board would be April fifteenth, and our meeting would be April sixteenth, if they wanted to.
So, if they wanted to get on the, well, I don't know if you know that, John, if they wanted to get on the zoning board's calendar, when would they have to apply?
I just talked to Jeff today, they can't make March, but they can make April fifteenth.
We just have to apply by March fifteenth, correct?
I think that's what he said, yeah. Jeff, Jeff knows. And then, our next meeting would be the sixteenth of April.
Would we be able to apply before the zoning board?
You could apply, and then it'd be heard on the fifteenth, April fifteenth. Then you'd know whether they gave you a variance or not.
Right.
I just didn't know if we could get on to the meeting for the sixteenth.
We could defer.
Prior to having the answer from the zoning board.
Right. So, what would happen is, you would go before the zoning board, the zoning board would make a decision, and then we would have our meeting after.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we could.
How long does it take the zoning board to make a decision?
That night.
That night, okay, it's like that, okay, they vote on it that night, okay.
I don't, in terms of hours, I don't know, but that's.
It's like a jury.
And I'd just add, the landscaping business that was there also had a variance.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, there is a history, so that may be helpful to you, you know, going forward with them. If they've changed it already, then.
Yeah.
Okay. And our, our meeting is when, April sixteenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So, what I want to do is, I'm going to ask to continue this matter to April sixteenth. I would entertain a motion for that.
So may.
All right. I have a motion by Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sam. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to continue this hearing to April sixteenth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes. One, two, three, four, six, zero, zero. All right, you're all set, gentlemen. We'll see you on the sixteenth.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening, master plan population and housing chapter.
This is hot off the presses, so I'm just going to run through it briefly. Ah, I can get back up there. Mouse. So, and I will say, I've looked through this, so many minutes. So, I've looked through this, Cassie did most of the work. So, just starting off, you know, why I think it's timely that we do this is, the two thousand twenty census data came out at the, you know, really towards the end of two thousand twenty-two. So, it's about, not quite a year and a half old. We were then able to take that information incorporated into the regional housing assessment, which was just updated last year. So, we've got a lot of good data. So, as I mentioned, Cassie did most of the work on this. So, she took all of that updated data, incorporated into this chapter, and then, for any data that we had even more recent, you know, data for, then she's incorporated that into this as well. So, I'm just going to briefly walk through it. It is obviously draft, and then hopefully, we could have more of a conversation on it at our next workshop. And I can point out just where I think there's a couple of areas of information that are worth adding. And we also want to add more, you know, more pictures, more contemporary stuff. But at any rate, you know, obviously, introduction, very, very general stuff. I think the main theme that you're going to see here, we've got the data on historical trends. Just as a segue, I think this is going to be really good information for the Economic Development Committee, to just kind of have this kind of information there. So, again, as you can see, you know, we've got historical trends to two thousand twenty. The two thousand twenty census provides the most comprehensive population information. We get annual American Community Survey data, ACS data, which is not as good, it's not as comprehensive. We do use it wherever we can. I'll just point out, so, if, anytime you see something that is data not from a decennial year, that's going to be ACS data. Why it's more limited is it's based on a relatively small survey. So, the sample size, the margin of error can be skewed. Nevertheless, you can see the overall growth rates. One of the themes that you'll see throughout this is that, I think, as you can imagine, Litchfield experienced really, really rapid growth decades ago, and it had, that rate of growth has dropped off dramatically in recent years. And Litchfield has become one of the slowest-growing towns in the region. This is through two thousand twenty. As we well know, we've seen a lot of development in the past few years, so I suspect that we will, the data is going to show, data lags, but it, data's going to show, I think, change. I think that's pretty obvious. One of the things, I'll just say I was going to mention it later, but, that I would like to put a more robust discussion of, is all the development that has been approved. Because we should discuss that, even if it's not hitting the daddy yet. So, that's something I'd just like to add. So, just kind of in general, see a lot of information on population change. This chapter is very data-heavy. One might argue, there's too much data, and we could certainly pull stuff out. I think the reason why I think it's valuable is it underpins so much else. So, some of it might seem repetitive, and it might seem like, gosh, there's a lot of it, but nevertheless. So, it just basically goes through everything, population levels, population growth and change, population density. There's a lot of tables in here comparing to other communities. Then we get into, how does population grow, natural increase versus migration, a lot of information on that. And then, of course, age, you know, surprise, surprise, we're getting older. Litchfield, not as much as some other communities, but nevertheless, that's true. So, you'll see a lot of information in there related to that. As you can see on, on this chart, you know, states generally older than we are. But, good, interesting information, household size, and then we get into income. As you can see, Litchfield is, you know, fairly up there in the income range. But that's obviously all important information. Again, a whole lot more information on income, on low and median income, education levels, and then we get into housing. And, you know, the trends for that you see for housing are going to parallel the trends that you see for population growth, not surprisingly, in terms of overall rates. As you can see here, building permits issued, we talk about the population change, you know, that's really reflected in the building permit data, you know, that you could see. It's dropped off pretty dramatically. Once again, the developments that we've just recently approved wouldn't have hit building permit stage yet. And some won't, you know, in two thousand twenty-four, probably won't see building permits until two thousand twenty-five. So, again, that's going to lag. And then, the composition of housing, again, not surprising, detached single-family homes is mostly what we've seen. That's changing, that's definitely something that we want to talk about. More housing-related data. Cost, now, we're going to get into housing costs, and, yeah, it's getting more and more expensive, not surprisingly. But, but what is also interesting, and I think we've kind of talked about this in the past, if you just kind of look from the rate of change, I thought it was really striking. Two thousand ten, two thousand fifteen, moderate rates of growth, then big jump to two thousand twenty, huge jump to two thousand twenty-three. It's a really, really dramatic increase. So, nevertheless, that's definitely something to worth talking about. And obviously, Litchfield is now at the higher end of the housing cost scale, which is not something that used to be true. So, worth looking at. We get into rental housing. The overall stock is relatively low, but again, you're going to see vacancy rates, comparisons of median rents, and how those change over time. And it's not, you know, huge differences, but you kind of go all the way down to the bottom, and where Litchfield used to be very in line, and, or slightly below the regional average, or, I'm sorry, the regional median in rents, that's no longer true. Median rents in Litchfield are now higher than the median. And kind of moving on down, there's not much in the way of assisted housing, as you can see, but there's some. More information on housing affordability, all worth really looking at. Not going to go into detail right now on all of these. But, you know, kind of, again, more and more stats on just kind of what's affordable, where the affordability cutoff is. This is, these tables in here are going to matter particularly when we talk about the town, the state's workforce housing statute, you know, which is discussed. Then we get a little bit into population projections. We have new population projections that were created by the Office of State Planning. I say the Office of State Planning, it's the Office of Planning and Development. I got to remember the latest, right? So, these were just, they hired a demographer to prepare these last year. So, these are really pretty recent, in terms of what we are anticipating for projections. And then, kind of moving on again, what do the projections look like? Once you get out, two thousand thirty, you know, I think they're pretty good. Two thousand forty, maybe. Two thousand fifty is just really pure speculation. But nevertheless, they've gone that far. And then, we get into, you know, kind of, what are some different alternatives for providing, you know, different types of housing? There is another table that we can put in there, and I think we probably should, on what the housing projection, in the regional housing needs assessment, there are actually housing production targets, and I think those are worth putting in here. They're not in here now, but I will add those to the draft, because I think it's worth talking about, and just kind of seeing, where are we, you know, in terms of meeting those. And as I said, I do think we need more conversation in here about what's permitted but hasn't been built, because I think that what we've seen is not just a lot of development that's been approved, but there's been much more diversity of housing type. You know, obviously, we've seen a lot of multifamily, we've seen manufactured housing. I think that's worth having a conversation about. And then, obviously, conclusions and recommendations, we haven't made those yet. So, that's really, so, so my hope is, is that everybody can kind of have a chance to spend some time and look at the data. And there is some things, you know, are some things I'll add, et cetera. And then, you know, maybe if we, I think we have the opportunity at our first meeting in April, to have a workshop. Maybe we could have a more robust conversation, kind of around, you know, what conclusions are we deriving, and other recommendations, you know, that we would want to make.
And certainly, this is a discussion also for the Economic Development Committee.
I think so, too.
I think as well, so, I mean, I welcome them to chime in on this as well.
I can definitely bring it up to the next meeting.
Yeah, we, we can certainly show the draft, if people are interested in taking a look.
Send the draft to Kim.
Yeah.
So, I just have a question of what triggered this to happen, was this your updating the census data?
Well, we are, I mean, we're kind of in this continual updating the master plan process, trying to update every chap, the chapters every five years. So, we've been doing that for a little while. We, it's been a while since we've done one.
Yeah.
So, we did the transportation one a couple of years ago, and.
Community.
I'm trying to remember the other ones we did.
Community design.
Community design. And so, it was kind of like, what's next? And we kind of kicked around a few ideas. But this one just seemed timely, because the data was there.
It just shocked me to see it there, I'm like, okay.
And then, I, you know, ideally, and not necessarily ideally, we've got a lot of choices, what we could look at. But, you know, economic, we've got the Economic Development Committee kind of working, so perhaps, once they've wrapped up, you know, their work, you know, that could, that would be a natural lead into the Economic Development Chapter, I would think.
Yeah, that's old. It's twenty years old.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, some of them are really old. There's other ones, too, we really do need to work on.
That one, yes, yeah.
And it's definitely been tough for the last couple of years, with just so much going on. It's been hard to pay attention to the master plan. So, I don't want to say we have a lull, who knows, but maybe we have.
Well, I think maybe, you know, now that we do have an Economic Development Committee, and we have a planning board, maybe the two should be working together to kind of work on that. That would be useful.
Community facilities is another one.
Spread more time together.
I'm not naming names.
We can have two meetings at once, that would be great. Can we do that? Oh, we love.
We'll have to.
This is a gesture of goodwill, it's not a.
Oh, it'd be great.
Well, we will have a survey out there soon, right?
It's out there, isn't it?
About, is it live, is it coming alive?
I saw it on something out there. I saw it, I saw it, the message was going.
That's going to give us a lot of good information.
Hope so.
You know, a lot of good input.
I'm looking at your table here, eleven twenty-one, on, it's at, near the back. It says, on the bottom, it says eleven sixteen, it's the page, but, I guess it is page sixteen. The populations.
Projections.
Yeah, so, currently, we're at eighty-five hundred, we're at eight four seventy, so eighty-five hundred, right? I'm just surprised Hudson is triple the size of us, and Merrimack is more than triple the size of us.
Yes.
And, so, Hudson's on one end of three A, right? And what was the other one that surprised me? Amherst always, you think they're out there in the woods, quiet, but we have less than they do.
Yeah.
All right. Nashua, ninety-one thousand. How many do you need for three NRPC commissioners? Ten thousand? Because we're not going to make it in two thousand forty.
Yeah, no, we're not, yeah.
Oh, two thousand fifty, I don't think we're going to make it there either.
It's, I mean, one of the things about Litchfield is that, geographically, Litchfield is smaller than a lot of other towns. So, a town like Amherst is, has a larger population, but it's also much larger physically. So, that's just worth keeping in mind, that's why a lot of it has a more rural feel.
And I know these are just projections, but it says by the, so, it says, two thousand twenty, we're at eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight population, and two thousand fifty will be at nine thousand four hundred and forty-nine, so, a thousand people, in the next thirty years, give or take.
Yeah, honestly.
Not saying, no, we're not nailed down, but I'm just surprised, a thousand people.
I find two thousand fifty to be almost not even worth putting in there, because it's so far out, it's so speculative, but we might even pull it. Because if you notice, twenty-four, there's very little difference between two thousand fifty and two thousand forty.
Right.
And, and the reason for that is, is the demographer is predicting a more significant, a very significant demographic impact from the aging of the population. And, and that could be true. The, the real unknown is, is we just have no idea what migration will look like. And I think it's too hard to go out, you know, to me, it's too hard to go out that far, and have any reasonable sense of what migration patterns are going to be.
We'll build out.
It's a small town, it's going to be very challenging to predict that.
Stop it right there.
Yeah, and we, and there's been a lot of folks who've looked at that. As, there was a lot of conversation around these, so one of the things a lot of people feel is going to happen is climate migration. I mean, right, so how do you predict, you don't know, is that going to happen, is that not going to happen? Um, we have no way of telling. Um, so yeah, I think that's just too far out.
But twenty forty says we have a thousand more people in twenty years.
Twenty forty says you have a thousand more.
A thousand people in twenty years.
That's probably not in a reasonable projection.
No, a hundred a year.
If you go back to history, it's probably not that far off.
I can do the math.
Right.
Twenty years, what is, was it twenty years, twenty forty? So in twenty years, we have a thousand people, all right. Okay.
And that's probably um, also sys, you know. Litchfield probably has enough, you know, vacant developable land to actually reach that.
Yeah, and that matches our twenty, uh, the year two thousand, two thousand twenty growth. So it's.
Right.
About twenty years, so that makes.
I, I, I think so, I think it's realistic. And that's one of the values of actually doing this chapter and obviously accepting the data. Um, but then that, that's actually giving you a, you know, a population to plan for. And then we can use that to inform everything else we do, the community facilities chapter, we can say, okay, Litchfield needs to plan for another thousand people.
So does that take into account like build out?
Not necessarily build out, no. Um, so what I would like to pu- uh, what I would like to put in here are the, are the housing targets, which I, we didn't put in. These population projections were done for the entire state, so they didn't get to that level of analysis.
So this is with the current number of buildings?
This doesn't even look at that, this is simply, they, they, they looked at the twenty twenty population for every town in New Hampshire. And then they factored in um, natural increase, uh, which in some cases is a negative number for some towns. And then migration, so there was just two factors that they looked at and they projected them, they didn't look at all as whether or not the town. Could handle that level of growth.
Okay, okay.
Look at the reality of our actual approved building projects.
Exactly.
Right, I just didn't know if there was like a cap to it or if, yeah, if they took into account new buildings or if it was just as if the buildings all stayed the same.
Yeah, they, they didn't look at it at all.
Okay.
Um, when we did the housing projection targets in the regional housing needs assessment. We brought in a different consultant, that consultant was Root Policy Research. And in that case, they looked at these numbers, but then we also looked at the development capacity of every town. And um, that's a bit of an art, you know, part art, part science. Because you don't want to assume that existing zoning in every community is going to stay constant because it doesn't. So they simply came up with density factors. And then they did look at the total acreage, what was vacant. Again, you're not doing parcel by parcel, so they tried to come up with a factor for constrained land that had to be removed. And so that's closer. It's still not as refined as a build out would be because a build out, we would get very nuanced. Um, whereas they're try, again, they're trying to do the whole state.
Sure.
So it's a little harder, but, but that'll be a good number to put in here because that, I think, I think that was, that was a realistic. That was realistic for building permits, how many units could a town accommodate in this period?
Okay.
And then when I looked at that versus these projections, that seemed reasonable.
Okay.
For, you know, for Litchfield, seemed reasonable. It did, uh, you know, and that's important to kind of do a little kind of, you know, ground truthing, could this really happen? Um, there were some communities where there was a mismatch and you had to kind of go back and think about, you know, could, is this really realistic? So that does happen for some communities that were either really heavily, a really good example is um, the example that all of us used was Newcastle. There was just no place to build much of anything in Newcastle. It's, you know, severely, it's very, very small and it's all built out. So most of these projections don't work for a town like that and you've got to kind of go back almost manually and say, we just have to adjust. Um, and that's the value of, you know, uh, um, going through a master plan process like this is we can take information that was based. On a methodology that maybe was widely applied and we can look at and say, do we think this is realistic or not? And come up with what, you know, kind of accept it base, or, or qualify it.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Um, do you think you'll have the housing stuff added on here before the end of the month?
I will, yeah, I will, I've already got it, so I'll just, I'll pull it and I'll insert it in here.
The twenty-seventh, I guess, so.
Yeah, cause that, that is good to know and good to check to see how we're doing against it. And I'm sure we've got, we've must have twenty twenty-three building permit data because it was for the, it was included in the, you know, in the town report. So we've got pretty good recent numbers. Right, so hopefully it's fun reading for everyone.
Well, it will be.
It's, it's quick to compare the old and the new.
Yeah, it is.
You can see, where you added things, which is, you know, twenty twenty was good.
Do you want a hard copy of the town report?
Oh, yeah, well, if they, if that's easily done, I'd love that, yeah.
Is there any data on where people are entering uh Litchfield from?
No. Um, where people are entering, not Litchfield specifically, there is on the state. On where people are moving into New Hampshire from. And you're going to be shocked. Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Massachusetts is number one. Yeah, Massachusetts is number one overwhelmingly, New York is, is another big one. But it's like Massachusetts and then everyone else is very small, some from Maine, some from Vermont. It's, it's after that, it's other New England states and then New York and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the uh, the data definitely shows how bad the affordability has gotten.
Absolutely.
And a, a lot of it's just the lack of development in recent years catching up um to the town.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right, we're seeing across the board. Uh, and I also think um, that the newer homes that are being brought to market are also more expensive, they're coming in at a higher price point.
Yeah, even.
There's good market reasons for that.
Yeah, even the um multifamily things are not cheap.
No.
Well, building costs is partly to bring to.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
But that's, yeah. That kind of jumps off the page at you.
What sort of jumped off the page at me was this population by decade. Where from nineteen seventy to now, we've added seven thousand people. So I can see where that, that sentiment of it, of Litchfield being a small town. Where it's, where it comes from, it's went from fourteen hundred to eight thousand four hundred, like that's an insane amount of growth.
It is an insane amount.
There are plenty of people here today that were here when it was less than a thousand people.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, but it's like, the growth is following like a logistic curve where it has, it's grows fast and then it has an upper bound.
Yeah, I mean, especially a couple of those decades, sixty to seventy, it doubles and then seventy to eighty, I mean, my goodness.
Right.
Doesn't quite triple, but that's, that's incredible.
Over the dou- more than doubled.
And not surprisingly, that's when the growth management ordinance was adopted.
Yep. That makes sense.
Anything else?
Well, Jay, um, great, well, thank Cassie, I guess, for the hard work that she did putting this together and ob- obviously your office. Um, thank you.
Absolutely, more to come.
More to come, so I guess we have some reading to do. And um, obviously, uh, I encourage the Economic Development Committee also to uh weigh in on this as well. So I think this is a great s- uh, starting point.
Read this chapter, right? Wasn't that one of the four homework assignments we had? Was to read four master plan chapters, I think that was one of them.
Oh, oh, for the Economic Development Committee, yeah.
Oh, Michael will definitely read it.
So now, but, but now it's a more updated version.
They will read it.
Okay, cool. Um, anything else, Jay?
That's all?
Uh, next item is committee reports, any reports from any committees? I guess I'll start with you, Jeremy.
Uh, so Economic Development Committee, um, met uh a week and a half ago. And we finalized our survey to the town, which is now live. Um, you can get copies here at the town hall or go online. Um, it'll also be distributed at the polls uh in a week. Uh, we meet again on the twenty-seventh of March at six thirty right here.
Uh, let's see, Board of Selectmen's been quiet overall, um, we meet March eleventh. At six thirty PM here at the town hall on Monday, um, voting is the next day, March twelfth, seven to seven at the high school. Uh, SIP will meet after the voting in March. So I'll see Jay more and more, right? All right, uh, Energy Committee, I'll hand off to Sam. NRPC, our next full commissioner meeting isn't until June, because we had it early in February. But we do have the executive committee meeting, uh, it still meets monthly, we'll be meeting Wednesday, March twentieth, thirty Temple Street in Nashua. And that's all we have.
Um, Laura Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee did meet um. February twenty-eighth, I believe that's a Thursday. Um, is that right, twenty-eighth?
I think so.
That sounds right.
Yeah, okay. Um, so they did meet, um, there was a meeting in Nashua. Um, I did not attend, but I, some folks from Litchfield did, um, who are on that uh committee. So we do have a number of people on that committee. Um, the uh Conservation Commission meets this Thursday. Um, at the fire station or town hall?
Town hall, six thirty.
Six thirty at town hall, so, okay. Never know. Um, and CIP will be meeting probably around end of March, beginning of April. I go once again. And I did attend, what, I think I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned it last time, I did attend the um NRPC meeting. Um, was that last week? I'm losing, losing my uh sense here, uh, last, last Wednesday. Um, and um, that was attended by Kim and um, I think Ralph Bohm was there representing Litchfield. And that's it.
What happened at the Limerlake meeting, Laura Merrimack?
There was a project um in Hudson, um, some, a site plan. Um, that I guess a piece of land on the, that butts uh, boards the river. So they had to go before the Limerlake.
Not the big golf course?
No.
Yeah, I think it's subdivision.
It was something, it was a subdivision or something, I think, I'm not quite certain, but yeah.
You forgot Sa- Sam.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Sam, Energy.
All right.
I skipped right over you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Energy Committee met on uh February twenty-ninth. Um, we had a long discussion about converting most of the public buildings to LED lighting, save energy costs. I think it's a great idea, um, so we're moving forward with that. And we had a few department heads come in and talk about where they have their most energy, their highest energy costs. So we talked about insulation and heating and all sorts of other uh topics. But really the plan is to um, kind of target the highest cost items and where we'll have the most energy savings. And bundle something in together for the CIP to, to look at.
Okay. And um, and also the, there's a, an article on the warrant for um, the um, community power.
Oh, of course, we have the warrant, yeah. Yeah, um, community power, um, talked about quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, no changes have been made in the past month, so it's all ready to go. I think the town is going to save a lot of money on electricity if they adopt it.
May I add to that, if you don't mind? Um, so we noticed ever source price has really plummeted. Now, there's three towns on NRPC that have this on their ballot, so. I understand, so just to let the town know, the Board of Selectmen, even if standard power comes to us with a rate. We do not have to accept it until it's lower than ever source, there's no timeline, we can wait three months, eight months, whatever, so. I don't know if that's a strategy ever source is taking. So there was an article, I believe Milford was one of the three towns where the rate went to the Board of Selectmen and they said, they had dot, they, they uh approved it higher. So the residents were upset. But in, was it Wilton? But here, the Board of Selectmen will not. We, we don't, we'll not accept unless it's.
Well, Wilton's case, it had already been accepted before the rates dropped.
So timing.
Yeah.
So this is a close call, when they call us and say, here's a rate, we have to be here, like, that day, you know, to sign it. You can't say, oh, we'll meet you next week, no, so we have a procedure in place for that.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Um, Budgeters doesn't meet until after town meeting. Um, and there is one seat that there, that no one is running for um on the Budget Committee. So if anyone's interested in a write-in campaign, that seat is open. I have not heard of any campaigns just um, just yet, but that's just me personally, I may have missed something. Other than that, vote on the twelfth.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, um, approval of the minutes, January second. How are we doing with those?
Let's do, let's do that, can we do that one last and we do the others?
We're going to do that one last, okay, uh, we will do that one last.
I have notes, but we got to make sure we all agree.
Okay, January twenty-ninth, today when I look at the January twenty-ninth.
Hold on, I have the notes.
That was a Monday.
That was the EPA one, right?
The special meeting, yeah.
Special.
Anybody have any questions on those?
Which ones are we looking at first?
The twenty-ninth of January.
They should all be on the.
Yeah, that's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't remember seeing any issues with this, with the twenty-nine.
No.
Yeah, I don't remember any issues.
If um, if there are no issues or amendments, then I would entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Queen, and do I have a second?
A second?
A second by Ms. Stevens, and further discussion. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained? Motion passes six zero zero, okay? February sixth.
I have a couple of minor ones on that.
Okay.
Uh, let me make sure I have that one open, February sixth. And I'm sure I said it, but I just want to make sure I heard it from everybody else on page two, actually it was page one, I think it was the intro discussion. Let me see, hold on, let me find it. Let me see. And it, February sixth, give me a sec, page two, it says H, let me see what H is, hold on. Oh, there it is, page two, H. I'm sorry, I dropped these notes last time, you know, I kept them for this week. Is this the one where you had to return the escrow money?
Yes.
Okay, where, I, I said the word aging out or something. I'm looking for the word aging, yes, it's motion to discuss, it is H, page two.
Uh, no, I think.
Uh, section two, excuse me, Roman numer two, sorry. So if you go to motion discussion. I guess I was asking why we were returning the money, if it was because, when I said aged out, I probably said that, but I was just. Asking if we just keep the escrow money so long and then you have to return it. Did I say aged out, if I did, that's fine, I just.
What, what, do you see that?
Uh, if you go to section two.
Yeah.
B, return of the escrow money for VAB.
Right.
Motion discussion, a little further down.
Yeah, where it says discussion.
Like the third sentence, and I said. Dr. Queen asked if there was a, if there needed to be a trigger or an amount was aging out. I, I was, did I, did I say that? I might have.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I meant if there was a deadline that you had to return the money. Did I say aging out, that's fine, if that's what I said, I just wanted to verify. Okay, and then you said aging back in your reply.
Yeah.
So I'm okay, I'm okay with that. All right, so I just think three, page three now. Uh, committee reports, let's go down. All right, uh, on page three, uh, deliberative session. I, you see, page three starts with, uh, that's really Sam. Sam Terrell. I don't know, let me just, again, I had these ready for last time, so I'm just reading.
Deliberative session is right at the top?
Yeah, let me just look at that. The school deliberative session is on that day. Did we have our deliberative at that point? What day was this? February sixth? We did, right? Uh, Article fourteen was discussed at deliberative. Okay, so I think three and four have an error. Sam is, was okay, and so was Jeremy, of what they said. It's the last sentence where it says on, on, with Jeremy, uh, that I stated that Article fourteen was discussed at deliberative session. That belongs up with number three. We discussed the energy one at deliberative.
With Sam, not with me.
Right. So if we can move the last line on page three, which is for Jeremy Robitaille, Economic Development Committee, the last sentence saying that I stated Article fourteen was discussed at deliberative, if you could move it up to number three with Sam.
So they meant on February twenty-second, that was all right? It just worked?
Yeah, that was the Economic Development.
That's okay. That sentence is fine.
So to start with Dr. Queenen, move that part up.
Move up to, under Sam.
Yeah.
Number three, section A.
And also, I said, and it was received well. The, the people in the audience.
Yeah.
Somebody came up, is there any other money saving? All right. So that's that one. That just didn't belong there. And the only other one, and it was a mistake on the Board of Selectmen, I know, I'm gonna say it, I'm one of them. Uh, go further down to F for its other. And I commented that I would inform the select board. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry, again, this was a month ago. We missed the potential, let me just look for the word Albuquerque. Hold on.
The last line of the first sentence.
Is it the last line?
Last word.
On the first sentence?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. She will notify the board about the signage for Albuquerque. And I, I would like to add that I believe the Board of Selectmen missed potentially adding it to the warrant articles.
What, what does that mean?
All right, so we had a, a grant from NRPC where we looked at the signage on Albuquerque and stop signs and painting and all of that. And the quote was given to the board, and obviously, it's very expensive. So I think the Board of Selectmen, we knew about it, but I think we maybe should have had a discussion that we maybe should have made a warrant article out of it. Let them decide, but it should have been.
So what do you want to say? I believe the Board of Selectmen.
Missed the potentially adding that.
Adding to a warrant article?
Adding it to a warrant article.
Okay.
I'm not saying they would do it, but we just didn't have a discussion about it.
Okay.
Because budgets, you know. Yeah. So I'm gonna make sure we don't drop it again, because it's obviously coming up, um, in the funding. So that, that was that, what I had for February sixth.
Anybody else have anything? With those amendments that we just discussed, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, I have a motion by Sam. Do I have a second?
I'll second the second one.
Second by Jeremy. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approval of the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, abstained?
All abstained.
Motion passes five, zero, one. And February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Let me find that one. Was that, that was last time, right?
That was eighteen, yeah.
My name's not in it, so I'm happy.
I can only say I have no time to review this at all yet, so.
I had the time to review in detail the first half, and the second half skimmed. I have some notes, um, and, uh, now, are we going to do it today?
We don't have to. If you feel that we, you need time to continue to review them, we can certainly table these.
We had an email come in too, right? An email came in for correction, but, you know.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It did. I, and I had, um, Matt change the section also in, in attendance to, um, put the right people with the right companies.
I'll make a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Okay. I have a motion by Jeremy. Do I have a second?
A second?
Second by Jared. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion to table the February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes six, zero, zero. So that brings us to January s- second.
Oh, man, I have a lot here. Let me ask a question. A happened. We got B minutes. We're being asked to kind of get B back to A. Should we just do bullets and be done? Interviewed Rose Medina, you know, whatever the agenda was. We can do that, because everybody corrects them differently. It's a five-hour meeting, so I'm just saying, do we want to just have a summary of bullets, or do you want to?
Because, right, we have corrections from Jeremy.
I guess so.
We had some.
But then I still have to review those corrections and all that.
We have corrections from an outside party.
Right. But again, you're relying on memory. I have to remember, you know what I mean? I don't know.
I watched the video again. That's what's on my comments, verbatim. But I didn't watch the entire video, only a couple sections.
Who does?
I watched the video again to review what people actually said to make my comments.
So, I know Kate submitted a bunch. Are they in the, the latest one?
I pretty much just felt that it was more detailed than necessary, so I think I agree with you, Kim, just.
Just do bullets. I don't, I don't like it because this is a legal document, but I'm just saying, what was the agenda that night?
But what you have to have in the minutes are the motions.
Right.
Legally, the motions.
I just think this is a political hot potato for a lot of people in the room. This side, that side, this, you know? I'm just saying, just, I don't like it because I think it's got everything that we need, but it's never gonna, I'm, I don't know if I'm gonna prove it to Kate or, you know what I mean? We're all, we're all trying to reconstruct something from a five-hour meeting years ago. So, I, I'll go either way, what, what the board wants to do. Or do you just want to say, whatever the agenda items were, the motions and?
You, I mean, you can do it. It'd be legally sufficient if you wanted to do it that way.
If we have good corrections, we should retain detail in the parts where we have good notes.
Yeah, but you have.
We have different versions.
Different notes from everybody.
What, what, what happened is, A happened, we got B, and everybody's trying to reinvent what A was, and now we're gonna go back and look at everybody's and make sure that happened. It's just gonna be a.
Unless you just tell that to re, relook at the video and take the main.
He could redo it. I mean, it's a five-hour task, and then we start with that. I'm just asking if this has been January second. Just kid, summarize. If he can summarize it, would that be better? A summary?
I think so.
Yeah? Summary?
It might be. It took me a good hour just to go over the first few pages.
It was a five-hour meeting, yeah.
So, stop, review, rewind, make my notes. It took a while.
Right.
How detailed are your notes? Because if your do, notes are.
I just corrected a few paragraphs to, you know, someone mentioned spooky rules, someone didn't say this. Uh, Joan did call, um, Rose. That kind of stuff.
And it's a, yeah, it's a small font.
It takes a while to go through all the thing, you know, and make the notes as you go. It's very tangential.
Like, do you think your notes are good enough to use?
But they don't, they don't cover the whole meeting. I didn't do the whole thing.
But for the parts that we?
For the parts we have. I, I would get behind my notes, yes, but that's, once again, a very small, small motion.
Do I just have them do high-level summary with the motions?
Well, I mean, you could do that, um, I mean, you could, if you wanted, I guess, if Matt wanted, wanted Matt to do them so that you have bullet points, you could do that. Um, and I, and I don't know, this is just a suggestion, but, um, could you incorporate by reference the, your, or the people's part, making them part of the minutes? The changes or the, um, your edits, I guess. Um, I don't know if that would make it even more confusing.
So you're saying, take one that's there.
That way, you would have the document, but you would also have the other edit or edits that were made by Jeremy. Did Jared, did you make?
No, he did.
I, I can submit, I can submit mine.
I mean, I mean, it would, it would, it would be incorporated into this, so it'd basically be part of it.
You want a summary on the top and then refer to a document that has all their edits in it?
We could have contradictory statements in there, essentially.
That's what I'm saying. It starts to be who rebuilt a lot of.
So I think probably what we should do is have Matt, let's have Matt redo them with the bullet points instead of the detail. Um, if that's what, if that's what's confusing everybody, and just keep it, keep it simple.
High level, in this case. I'm making a practice, but in this case, just do it.
But for this, this particular case.
Does this only, is this only the case for certain sections, or does it all need to be reviewed?
We'll see when it comes up.
I think the whole thing should.
I think, I think it should, the whole thing should be just looked over, just done.
The Juniper Court section is, is not bad.
How many motions were there in this meeting? Were there a lot?
I'm trying to remember.
So you have to add the motions legally, right?
Yeah, you have, you have to have the motions, uh, you know, the subject that was discussed in the motion. So if you've got the type and you've, so, you know, so-and-so was interviewed, um.
So I can send my edits in, and he can add them all?
Unless he wants to incorporate the changes that people have made, I mean, into the document.
I can tell him what, what you want him to do.
I mean, and, you know, basically what, you know, what you're looking to, to change.
Okay, so you still have to, you're, you're going to meet, I'm, I already marked mine up. I can just type them up and send them, or just scan it and, and send it in.
And I have.
And then you.
I've already submitted mine.
You've submitted yours. Kate has submitted hers. So he would just have to go in and.
Mine was mostly striking detail that I didn't think was necessary, so I can pretty much just toss.
Did you send Jose and Kate?
Yeah, she did.
My email to, to Matt. Shoot, I don't remember if I copied.
I, I can look and see.
All right, I will get these over to Matt.
You want to task Matt with updating it based on our, our corrections?
Because I just have mine written down.
That way, all the corrections are in there, and that, and he's gonna have to go and make sure that it's.
I need a motion for this. I will support the motion to go ahead and have, um, the secretary go ahead and update the January second minutes to match all of our corrections as best as he can.
For Kim, for Jeremy, and for Kate.
I'll second that.
I'll second by, um, Jared. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passed. Motion passes five, zero, one. Okay. Are we good?
Progress.
All right. Well, I'll see if he thinks he'll be ready the nineteenth. It probably would be to the nineteenth.
And I know, and I, you know, I, I feel bad, but I have him go back and do it all, but I think we just need to do that because I, I just want to make sure that everybody's comments get, or amendments or whatever get incorporated. I think that needs to be done, so.
Yeah, fortunately, a lot of the notes are just that first part, so that will, you will only have to review the parts.
Maybe it won't be as, you know.
Jared, did you send him, Matt, your comments, or did you send them to me?
Uh, which ones?
On the January second?
I do not have.
He has the February twentieth comments.
That was his, yeah, for the February twentieth.
Yeah. Yeah, those are in now.
Okay.
So he needs mine. I'll send them in tomorrow. I just have them written, but I'll type them up and send them in.
Kate, I'll look for yours.
So, January second, February twentieth.
I can probably find them again and resend them.
On the February twentieth? Oh, that was, okay.
Send it, copy me two.
The other two are, okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Um, any other business this evening? Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
Joan.
Joan. Whatever your name is. You're the woman sitting over there. No, do you have anything?
Must have had a tiring day. Um, April second, Nick from CEI is going to come in regarding the stormwater updates.
Okay, sure.
Hopefully, you can make it that date.
Okay, sounds good.
I have something.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so my term ends at the end of the month, and I, uh, at which point, I plan to step down from the planning board.
Okay. Oh, all right. It wasn't something we said, was it?
I really learned a lot here in my term, so much about local government and how, how everything works in town, and I appreciate working with all of you. It's been a real pleasure. I understand my timing is not great with Kate's announcement at the beginning of the meeting, but, um.
Certainly, we have to be sad to have you go, but, you know, I understand. Um, thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you all.
Appreciate having you, you know, remember, so. I did get this from, uh, Kim Kleiner. Maybe I should read it. Um, "Good afternoon." She did send out this to me. "It listed below is the current roster for the commission on file with the town clerk with their expiration date." So this is the planning board. Um, so, um, Michael Croto, Chairperson, two thousand twenty-six, Kate Stevens, Vice Chair, two thousand twenty-five, Jared O'Connell, two thousand twenty-four, uh, Sam Terrell, two thousand twenty-four, Jeremy Robidoy, two thousand twenty-six, and then we have Kimberly Queenen, Selectmen's rep. And then we can get, quest up to three alternate members. So, as she's, what she says is, "If a member expires in two thousand twenty-four, to please let her know by this Friday at noon whether the individual would like to be reappointed by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, please remember to notify us in April of any changes to Board Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, and please forward any resignations as well." Well, I guess tonight, we have it on record, too, that are.
And I need, I need email for resignation so I can go to the town clerk.
Yeah, so maybe just put it in, in a writing, and basically, an email would be.
I'll email you, Joan. When does my term?
Says two thousand twenty-four. But I don't think that makes sense.
Did he take over the other seat? Is that what it was?
I was taking the place of someone who resigned, so.
Probably, that's probably why.
So you just have to get.
Mr. Buffett sworn in.
I think it was Ron.
Ron.
Ron Stevens.
Yeah.
Right. That's right. Hopefully, you want to continue?
Yes.
Okay, so. Thank you. All right. Um, okay, great. So, um, yeah, so I guess, um, we'll, we'll notify, um, Kim Kleiner of the changes. Obviously, our Vice Chair is leaving us regretfully. Um, and, um, obviously, the resignations as well, so. Figured I'd just let everybody know about that, so. Okay.
So you can fill out the volunteer application on litchfieldnh.gov to sign up for the planning board.
Correct. So we do, I mean, we are gonna be in need of planning board members. If anybody is interested in the planning board, um, please, um, get an application, uh, fill it out, and, um, get scheduled at one of our meetings. We'll interview you and obviously, um, recommend you to the Board of Selectmen. And, um, you can, uh, join us here in person.
And then Mr. Medina will have to be added to that list once he's sworn in.
Yes, he will be, yes, uh, once he's sworn in, so.
Yes, we're looking for two members and three alternates.
Two members, three alternates. Yeah, exactly. So, we are looking for people.
Staying on Energy?
Yes.
All right. Um, anything else from anybody?
Send her the minutes.
Without, with that, I guess, um, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Are your last motion to adjourn, the planning board?
Oh, you want to do it?
By Kate. Last section, said it by Sam, your last motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, abstained.
Yeah.
Motion passes six, zero, zero.
Back and forth.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Kate, for all you do for town, and, um, you will be missed, and thank you all for joining us this evening. And if you have an interest in the planning board, please let us know, and get out and vote on March twelfth. Have a good evening.
I'm going to get Jay a town report. Does anybody else want a town report?